We'll now call it ordered to March 7, 2016, Richmond Public School Board meeting. Madam Clerk, Carlos.
Mr. Boyer?
Here.
Ms. Brennan?
Here.
Mr. Boyer?
Here.
Mrs. Taylor? Mrs. Harris Mahoney? Ms. Taylor is present. Dr. Jones? Mrs. Puppias? Mrs. Orson?
Here.
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
And the record, Dr. Pluck, you've been talking about your student Regina Walker.
Dr. Brennan, your student's a student. More, more members of those that attended would like to take this opportunity to introduce Regina Nicole Walker, a senior at George Wood High School. The personality traits that come to mind when you describe Regina? Intellectual, industrious, reliable, resourceful, competent, and career's bad. Regina has experienced a lot of accidents and success during her tenure at George Wood. She is a straight A student for every marking period since ninth grade. Has been named All-American Scholar in 2012. Her greatest accomplishment academically to date is that she has the prestige and honor of being classed a 2016 valedictorian with a grade point average of four on four nine five. She's actively engaged in volunteering at her school, being a president of FBLA. In tenth grade, vice president and president of National Technical Honors Society in grades eleven and twelve. She's also a member of the National Society of High School Scholars. Regina's volunteerism in community service projects have included Freedom, excuse me, Freedom in grades nine through twelve, schools for kids, cancer awareness, bullying awareness since grade, currently this twelfth grade year. Currently, along with honors government class, she's been doing research on the history and attributes of the Hillside community and other area housing projects. The research has been featured in Virginia Currents and Virginia in the Morning. Regina's post-servant plans include majoring in computer science or computer engineering with the aspiration of owning her own business. She has been offered a $10,000 scholarship from Virginia U. And previously sentenced $18,000 scholarship at Fairwood College. She has also accepted admissions to Virginia Commonwealth and Virginia Community. Ladies and gentlemen, I introduce you to Ms. Walker. Assistant Principal, I know the person's been out sick or something. Assistant Principal's here, are your parents in audience? And dads in audience? Well, Ms. Walker, it's certainly a pleasure having you with us for this meeting and the next one. These, these times we have our students here are especially encouraging because as many of us who come to these school board meetings and sit around this table know, we have a lot of good things going on in Richmond Public Schools and the best things we have going on are students like you. So, thank you, welcome, and I hope you enjoy each day. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk?
Is there anyone here who needs to start with their services?
Carlos, if you'd let us know before the meeting started that there's something really good going on that you guys are going to be doing, would you just let everyone know? And I'd encourage you to listen, pass it along to as many people as you can as far and wide, so go ahead.
Yes, this week, Thursday, Friday, we're gonna have a number of interpreters working in some of the elementary schools, about five or six elementary schools in the Richmond district that have the most population of Hispanics. So, we're gonna be helping out with the parent teacher conferences. And of course, if you know of anyone that could, needs encouragement to go to these programs, we always see that when there's interpreters there, the parents seem to be more engaged and more feel like they're part of the community. So, we encourage you all to keep doing what you're doing well in Richmond, and we'll do the same.
Mr. Moore and more members, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce you to members, two new members of the team that you approved and joined our staff. At this time, I'd like to ask Dave Myers and Lynn Braggan to please stand up. You know Mr. West Bay will be retiring on April 1st. Dave Myers has had twenty-plus years as well as Mr. Braggan returning home. Dave has been standing here also. Dave's currently assistant superintendent of business services or some other title like that. And head over, he's had the same role in Ripo and Chesterfield also. So, I think that we all would agree that we've been very pleased with the service that Mr. West Bay has given. He actually came out of retirement to help us. And all reference checks and commentary, Dave is just as good or better according to Mr. West Bay. And Lynn's record speaks for herself, who's also coming back home from Hanover County. So, I present to you Mr. Dave Myers and Miss Lynn Braggan.
The next item on the agenda is item four, received and approved recommendation.
Dr. Brennan? Mr. Moore and more members, I'd like to take this opportunity. The gentleman's retired, recommend as Lynn Braggan to serve in the position of deputy agent.
You have to turn your applause. You're suspended.
Is there a motion to approve Ms. Lynn Bragg as a deputy agent? Is the movement properly signed, Mr. Brennan? Your point, Ms. Lynn Bragg is our deputy agent, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing the Madam Clerk, Carlos.
The motion was made by Ms. Harris Mahoney, second, and Mrs. Orson, second, and Ms. Boyer. Ms. Brennan? Mrs. Taylor? Ms. Harris Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Foster?
Yes.
Yeah. Ms. Brennan, they're voting on deputy agent and the rest?
Yes. And the next question, yes.
And Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Motion for this six items, one extension. The next item on the agenda is item two, public information, discuss what's being decided today.
So, when the clerk reads the name of the person who signed up, please come forward. As many of you know, we have some policies, three minutes if you are an individual, five minutes if you're representing your organization. No applause, please do not refer to any employee, school board member, or anyone else by name.
Ms. Foster?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it possible for you to, as some of the students in the library, to refer to the law and their weekend to the board for your policy? And I've talked about policy.
You have written a policy on the hall.
I'm just saying, just in case someone has concerns because I've had a report with the college to me several times over the last few weeks, making it feel like a violation of their right to be able to come to the board meetings and speak directly to and announce a specific board member. So, this has been a process to all, thank you. Ms. Foster, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, I'm the staff of the school board. My name is Crystal Foster and I'm here advocating today on behalf of my son, Kyle Paula, who started off as a student at different middle school. He was a previous student at Benford last year. I did have a son to graduate from Benford last year as well. And I am here because over the course of the three months of school, from September to December, I noticed that Malachi began to receive numerous suspensions based on behavior that I thought was somewhat frivolous. So, once I realized that his suspensions were not the same as the year before, which he had already seen in suspension seconds, he'd been in trouble. I inquired regarding the number of suspensions under this new administration, Ricky, oh, I'm sorry, the new principal of Benford. And it took me some time, but I finally got the suspensions, which were sixty-five suspensions in a two-and-a-half month span versus twenty suspensions in a two-month span the year before. So, at that point, I began to speak to Ms. Ricky regarding the suspensions. And after the suspensions, I noticed that my son was coming home directing me that, you know, there were different little things going on at school. And subsequently, he was removed. He was under a contract and she claimed that he violated the contract. So, subsequently, he was removed and placed in his own school, which is MLK. Once I realized that he was placed at his own school, I reached out to several different administrators from the top, all the way down. And I explained to them that he was an honor student. The courses that were, that he was taking in Benford were not in, at MLK. So, he would not receive the same course instruction. So, needless to say, when I was speaking to the administrative, administrative guys, they told me that there was nothing that they could do, there were no other options, and that he needed to be at MLK. I even actually had the principal and the guidance counselor called in to a couple of people just to let them know that at the end of the day, he's at MLK. He does not have, he's a seventh grader taking all eighth grade classes to include lunch, which poses different problems of his own. And I felt like he is due equal quality education across the board, no matter what school he's at. And I mean, I went there today and the school was four, fully locked the doors. I've never seen, I've never been in a middle school where the doors are locked. So, I'm here, I'm asking the school board to definitively do something, place my son where he needs to be to receive the proper education.
Now, there are others who would like to address the school board, if public information, please line up in the center aisle. Make sure, I think there's a sign-in paper and a pen and pencil there. Make sure you sign it and also station it before you start speaking.
My name is Reverend Carlos of the college. I have a natural ability to draw attention to elementary schools who have been targeted by the superintendent of Richmond Public Schools. Being the executive director of elementary school, Dr. Anthony, has been working.
Sir. We've run out of policies that we, that govern our public information, so we can try not to call anybody out by name.
Perhaps our ourselves had a problem.
You can talk about the problem, not the people.
But the problem that we resolve is the people. I mean, I've been wasting my minutes, I thought the board also didn't create a dialogue with the people who speak.
We don't, but I do need to keep folks within the bounds of our policies, so.
I mean, do we have that in writing?
It's in our policies.
Is there a statue for that?
There's a policy, we have our own policies.
I mean, is it a statue or just something?
It's a policy, please go ahead.
They have, being the executive director of elementary school has been working cohesively with the principal since Martin, Dennis Martin, to target my daughter's school, forcing her to fail and perform below what she is able to do. They have bought most of the staff that manages the fourth grade. They have taken turns calling out for taunting the child and attempting to force her to act. How inappropriate. She is being placed in a situation where she would have to fight or be bullied by other children. Then, accused of bullying. The superintendent and the executive of elementary school and the principal have encouraged the teacher not to teach the child so that she looks like an underachiever and is struggling with the curriculum. They have, they have stone walls from engaging in the child academic, academic as well, cutting support upon, away from her, from home. The principal, Michael, manages the child's conduct to discredit the child and make her look like a menace to the school. She has assumed the role of determining the child's grade and made in each comment on the child's report card and progress report. The teacher does not have a final say in the child's activities. The principal makes the final decision. All to make the child look like she is having problems in school. Superintendent is having my child targeted because of letters I have written to him accusing him of being part of the problem. The problem, we are, we accuse him of being part of the problem. We are having the school, which he deemed hard to swallow. We call Mr., we call the superintendent hoping to get resolution to the problem we were having with the school. Instead, he manipulated the situation with guilt and deception, making things worse. Then he asked us to prove it.
Thank you, second.
We have, I have a letter from the school that I received in December the seventh, when I attended the school board, my child was attacked in the school when she returned back, accusing her of not following school rules or guidelines. Just, I have a quick number like this to add to the public.
Can you hand it to Ms. Brennan, Deputy Clerk?
Superintendent, I was spoken to numerous times. And I just like to say, I'm not going to tell you the truth. I've attacked my child.
Thank you for your demonstration.
Good evening, how y'all doing? First of all, I'd like to thank y'all for having me here. My name is Maurice, I'm the director of Blue Card K in the Spanish coaches in South. Y'all probably seen us marching all around and then able to live in inner cities. I come here today to talk to you about and trying, implementing school sports in the city of Richmond, especially football. We feel like what's happening in that city is that we have kids that are sitting in these neighborhoods that don't have enough activity to be involved in at school. So, they're being encouraged by older kids in the neighborhood. We need to give them something to do outside of school. If we feel like middle school sport is like a no-brainer. The reason we say this is because if you look around at surrounding counties, I went to Brooklyn Middle School. We were a feeder program in Tempe High School. And if you look at John Markey, no reason in the world Henderson shouldn't be in the program with John Markey. And I think that this little tool, if we implement this tool, that it'll change a whole lot of stuff. Because these kids, they want to be a part of something. And they're finding it in all the wrong places. They're finding that in the neighborhoods, because they should look probably naturally, look up to these older kids and influence them to do something that will achieve this school success. A lot of violence in the city. So, programs like this, right, were influencing a lot of kids to, you know, talk to their coaches. And instead, we had a program where we implemented, you know, a grade where we can have, you know, to move guidelines. Where, you know, when I went to Brooklyn Middle School, we had to play five classes a play. You had way games, right, you were neck and tap, so that's, that's character building. When you put on a jersey, right, that's, that's group, that's being a part of something. And I think what Richmond's school system in Richmond, by the way, I mean, we do some great stuff, but I feel like sports is something that being the capital of Virginia is something that your state capital has got to implement in that city. You gotta have a school, middle, a middle school athletic, football, basketball, volleyball. They got basketball, they don't have a volleyball, they don't have a football. They need something to keep these kids occupied, trust me. They being occupied, they just not being occupied by the people that we want to be occupied from. And now, I mean, these things brought to them, not all kids, and not all kids in this office. You know, if these kids are chemically, that's a charity. You know, that's what they, that's what they might grow on, bro. And I think we need to give them, we need to give them a dream. I talked to Ms. Barbara Nichols. She oversees Loudoun County for about thirty-five years, she retired. So, I just, I talked to her just to see if I'm on, if I'm on the right track. And she said exactly, she was like, you know, Maurice, you know, to enforce education, you do need a hook. And what Richmond has to do is find that hook. And like I said, once again, if you look at all the surrounding counties, they have a hook. The Hermite Gold, they have a hook. I mean, you got kids that leave in Richmond, send to school, transfer, they go to a, to a Holland Springs. And Hermits and that, the Hermits in Holland Springs are putting these kids in school? There's no reason that Richmond shouldn't, these kids should be looking for a way to get out of it. You know, they shouldn't be looking to get to other schools to play sports. It's gotta be something that Richmond's got to implement. And not only that, it's a tool, it's a tool for us as coaches to communicate with the teachers, with the principal, give them back the information, you know, to what's going on in the neighborhood. Because these kids, they talk to coaches, they look up to coaches. We have a lot of feedback just from the marches that we do. And I heard somebody say, well, what about Park and Recreation? Park and Recreation is fine, but they don't implement all what they need to implement to get these kids on the right track, which is the five schools, the five classes, the GPA to play. You got kids from Brooklyn going to Hermits in eighth grade, already can tell you, you know, about GPA. Already can talk to me about NCA, double A clearinghouse. Richmond should be able to do the same thing. It's very important. You know, we look at TV and we say, hey, crime is high. People are there doing some very idiotic stuff. Well, maybe if we had gave them something, you know, who'd say, if we hadn't gave them something to feel a part of, or something to implement, maybe we could have changed them down the road.
I expect to have.
Good evening, school board chair, vice chair, superintendent bid, and the entire school board. My name is Shawna Hare and I am president of Richmond Education Association. REA would like to thank superintendent and school board attorney for meeting with REA and DEA on Wednesday to try to solve a contract issue regarding one of our members. We appreciate the fact that the superintendent has been willing to keep an open dialogue with REA and DEA. We also appreciate the fact that the superintendent listened to our concerns about potential systematic problems with awarding teaching contracts, and we hope that those procedures will be changing for the next year. You will hear later on in closed session about the old system. I am making a statement on behalf of that member because we feel that this case affects all REA members. This is, there is no question that the member had a contract. There is no question that the school board adopted that contract. And there is no question that the name appeared on the Human Resource Action Report. There is no question that the member worked for over two months, meeting and exceeding expectations. Nevertheless, they were terminated without any cause and due process. We are concerned that the school board did not have all the facts when this occurred. We have also been concerned about other instances over the past two years where agreements between RPS and members or employees have been violated. Our members want to trust the administration. Our members and all of RPS employees need to know that administrators will be held to the same standards of ethics and professionalism as teachers. Our members need to know that RPS will honor its contracts. We urge you, the school board, to honor its contract with our member and resolve the case adequately today. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to offer public comment? Anyone else, public comment, public information? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next time.
The next item is item three, your academic improvement items, three points zero one, procedures approved 2016, 2017 school calendar.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Dr. Brennan, and school board members. This evening, you have before you the school calendar draft for the school year 2016, 2017. And you have some copies on the side of the interview table. We have this one, please, and you're on board now.
Do you often have some rest or maybe?
Just a general overview for you to note some of the key items here. Of course, then, we took time as the division committee looked at it and made sure that we considered quite a few things, one of which is the instructional department needs to drive the school calendar. If you notice, we have in the first month of August of the calendar, we have approximately, really it's eight days that are either school-based professional development or division-wide professional development before we start school at Labor Day. Other key points are in November, it's an election year. Many of our schools are, of course, sites for polling. So, we have continued our tradition of being off that day for students. However, staff will be using that day for conferences, parentage conferences, as well as reading, if you need to take care as far as doing a teacher birthday. We've continued the Thanksgiving holiday with giving our clients and customers time to travel, which is on Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And then in December, we have winter break, which extends to the second of January. And currently, the way the policy is written, because the holiday falls on the first, we have to give the second as a holiday. And that is a little different than our colleagues in Hermite Gold and Chesterfield. They should return on that Tuesday. So, we will be out on the second as this draft will be. Couple of things to note, if you would, because of technology, the committee felt that the second, traditional conference day, we did not need a full day, which is usually around March the 10th, is a two-hour early dismissal. Many of our parents are updated through our current technological management, student management system, almost you get data reports from the student's progress. However, we would. However, we would use that day not only for a teacher's birthday, but early dismissal, we would allow, uh, the freedom for teachers to meet with the parents on March 10th. Uh, spring break, of course, is in the middle of April. And, uh, our testing begins with senior week, uh, during the fourth week of May. And the last day of school for the 2017, uh, would be twenty, would be June sixteenth, 2017.
Those are just the highlights of the calendar. As you all just finish this, you need a chance to get out this creating hardship that's carried over to, as being a freshman to the board.
Yes.
What is the absolute drop dead date that we need to prove this? So we started that.
We just want to get close to this as soon as possible and finalize that the families are making, um, travel rankings and things like that for a larger holiday. So as soon as possible, we respect those families. Um, but certainly, we do want to give you an opportunity to review it and ask any questions that you might add.
Since we are gonna, we'll hold this until the 22nd. If you have questions that are of dire importance right now that we just haven't had answered, you can ask them now or you can email directly to the board. Do you have questions that need to be answered? As far as in this?
It's not really a question, it's more of a comment. Um, okay, so full makeup day, the only one I see is in February on President's Day. So that is, we have a bunch of snow days. We feel like we need to have a makeup day, and that's the only one we have. So I'm wondering if we could also put that on January 2nd and MLK Day, just to give ourselves a little more flexibility in case, for some reason, we get some kind of crazy weather situation in December where we feel like we need to make it up earlier.
And January 2nd, when she said, uh, January 16th?
Ms. Taylor, do you have a question?
Yeah, mine is pertaining to being here at these conferences, but, um, I just wanted to go over that, um, MLK Day doesn't work for me. I've been pushing for more parental involvement for, since 2013, and I've, you know, been very vocal. And I can see that the number of days that are being offered declining. So I would really appreciate you all going to join board, back to join board, and finding a way to include more parent-teacher conferences. Um, my understanding is even this year, the parent-teacher conferences are going on during the Superintendent's State of the School Address. Is that correct?
We can pull the calendar and follow up with you, but just so that you would know, and again, I know we're gonna follow back up, in the spirit in which the calendar was developed for this year, um, we certainly, again, agree that parental involvement and communication is, is key and critical. Uh, the expectation is that that communication is ongoing throughout the year with our technology and things like that. We want to make sure that we can maximize the time that teachers have to dig deep into the data to make sure that the instruction is appropriate for the students. Uh, but we'll certainly take back all of the feedback that you all provided today, uh, as well as any additional comments that you might provide, maybe an email to the group for consideration to come back to you.
Okay, just as a follow-up, you know, this is something, again, that I've been talking about for a long time. And again, it's been declining. We have a new Aspen system, the Parent Portal, that gives to parents access, and we've had a lot of pickups in that program. So if we can find a way, we still have many, many, many parents throughout the year who have no access to their children's grades. So gaining more time on the calendars, especially on a weekend day, maybe at a community, um, like li, public libraries, public areas like that, that would give them that opportunity to communicate, find a way, and how that's gonna impact the budget before we make a final decision, would be much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? So we need to get on the 22nd. If we could have any questions or comments to Dr. Boyd by, whatever that brings. So the 16th. Thank you.
Is the 21st a holiday week? Why don't we just know the 27th?
I heard 22nd, I should refuse 27th. 21st, I think, just since.
Oh, okay.
Lay the head in, not the heart.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk?
The next item is three points zero two, seeing that that's meant to be a body to pursue day treatment on, please.
Okay, so. I want everybody to pay attention. This is, this is a subject and an issue we've had lots of discussion on. Therapy day treatment, the service providers and the quality thereof. Um, and the last time we discussed it, we were, we were gonna develop an RFP to put out on the street and procure our providers. The draft RFP has been sent out in a couple, at least two weekly reports. And I'm not sure if anyone has offered comments or any questions or anything like that, but this will be our last opportunity because we need to get it out and get it back and then start that process. So there are folks here to answer questions about it, um, if anyone has it. Ms. Lynn, yes?
Yes. Do we anticipate that it's going out this week?
Yes.
This week, um. Maybe these are questions that... What I wanted to know was, the, uh, remember the previous discussion we had, and we said that the providers would come back? How many of those providers came back? Do we know?
Um, we can get that information for you, but I don't have it present with me today.
Okay. How many children are currently being served through a therapy day treatment?
Same response.
Okay. I, I think I probably follow up online.
But no questions on the procurement document? Or comments? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Boyd.
Thank you. The next item is, um, full budgetary adage receiving an overview of the main budget.
As Mr. Westgate is getting ready and coming up, I, I would just like to encourage us, starting with tonight, and this will be a high-level sort of assessment. They've only had roughly forty-eight hours to kind of go through the budget. I'm sure we all read the papers, saw the news stories. We need to get everything we asked for. And I think we have got to spend the next two months or until such time as Council boasts on our appropriation, making this our most important task at hand. Because we're not gonna get eighteen million dollars more. And so we've gotta make some real hard decisions, and they're not gonna be popular. So I would just ask us to focus on this as our most important priority. Let's work together to develop a spending plan and make the best effort we can. So with that, Mr. Westgate. Which one are you going to first? Preview.
Mr. Chairman, board members, uh, the document here is posted on board docs, and there's a narrative that goes along with this. I'll just point out some key points. Every year, uh, the city prepares a biennial budget. In the odd years, they're preparing, um, a two-year budget, which lasted fifteen. The spring of fifteen, they were presenting the sixteen, seventeen biennial. Sixteen to be adopted, the subteen to be approved. And then a year later, in the even years, which now are in sixteen, then they revisit that second year of the biennial budget, which is seventeen in this case, and they, uh, make revisions to go based on more current information. And then they, that becomes the mayor's proposed budget until Council acts on it and adopts the second year of biennial budget. And the next year, in the spring, they'll produce the next two-year biennial budget for, um, eighteen, nineteen. So what this is showing in red and blue is, red is representing what the approved budget represented last year, a year ago, when it was the biennial budget. In the second year, the red bar represents the approved version of it. And they had, at that point, kind of anticipated revenue increases of ten point three million total. And what this chart is showing, um, is where those major revenue changes are occurring. And it's just broken into major buckets. And the first bar there represents, uh, real estate taxes. And so then the blue bar represents the revised year-two budget, which is now called the proposed, mayor's proposed budget. And there's now eighteen point four million dollars in revenue. So the, the revenue forecast increased by eight million dollars. And this is showing you where those changes occurred. So a year ago, real estate taxes were projected to be seven million dollars. They're now nine million, nine ninety-six, or almost a three million dollar increase in those funds. Other taxes, all other taxes combined increased from eight hundred sixty-eight thousand to two point four million. Uh, license permits and fees went down about five hundred thousand. The next group is intergovernmental revenue, which is their state revenue and so forth. It's not revenue we would participate in. Uh, went from three hundred sixteen thousand to three and a half million. Finances and forfeits increased by about two hundred eighty thousand. Utility payments to the general fund went down about a hundred thousand. Uh, charges for goods and services went up, almost level funded from a million four ninety-nine to a million five oh five. And then other, well, fund, general fund revenue sources improved by, they were forecasting them a year ago to decrease by three million. Now they're saying they're decreasing about two point four five million. So about a five hundred thousand dollar improvement in the resources. And so the next, um... This is just showing you a pie of what the total of revenue picture looks like in the city. So real estate property taxes represent thirty-seven percent. The blue part of the pie there on the right represents the, about thirty-seven percent of total city taxes. Beyond that, they get another two hundred and one million dollars in other taxes. Uh, license permits and fees represent another forty-one million. Intergovernmental revenue, one hundred eleven million. And so altogether, they've got four, almost five hundred fifty thousand, sorry, five hundred fifty million dollars in other revenue sources beyond the real estate taxes. And right now, they're allocating a hundred and forty-six million dollars a year to the school board for operations out of their general fund to our general fund. And that, and they passed an ordinance this year and asked that, and saying that the school board will bring forth how much the school's request represents of that blue piece of the pie, the real estate taxes. Even though our, our revenues can come from other sources other than the real estate tax, they're just asking for that as a benchmark. Because a lot of people equate, if we, if the school board had its own taxing authority, then what would the mill levy look like? What would schools be assessing on real estate property if we were collecting our own revenue? So it's a, it's a fair, and it also makes it easy to compare us to every other locality to see how we stand relative in that, in that measure. So, um, there's another page that presents that. This is showing you the detail, which is out of their budget book, of those revenue sources and the variance from the current adopted budget to the approved budget a year ago to the proposed budget now. And this is the sheet that compares that. Pull this up a little bit, so you can see the important part here. This is showing those, those revenue sources down below here. So here's the, here's the adopted. See the FY sixteen adopt column? So real estate taxes were two hundred forty million, the top line there, two hundred forty million, two twenty-eight. The FY seventeen approved a year ago was forecasted to be two hundred forty-seven million, and it revised it upward by another, uh, three million, almost to two hundred fifty million. Currently, a hundred forty-five million, nine ninety-nine that they allocate to the schools represents, you see the bottom percentage figure there, represents sixty point eight percent of that current real estate tax pool of two hundred and forty million in the current year's adopt column. So the hundred forty-six million they give us now, rounded, represents sixty point eight percent of that two hundred forty million. And so doing what their ordinance requested, the next bar there is showing you, if we were flat funded, then our hundred forty-six million becomes fifty-eight point three percent of that, of the newly forecasted, proposed two hundred fifty million in real estate taxes. Our hundred forty-six million, you'll read processes, it becomes fifty-eight point three percent. And our, the gap that we requested of eighteen million would represent another seven point two percent. If they were to fund everything we requested, then our hundred sixty-four million from the city would represent sixty-five point six percent of the real estate tax on it. And, um... Okay, there we go. And that represents, out of the dollar twenty current tax rate, that would represent seventy-nine cents then. So seventy-nine cents of the real estate tax rate would be going to schools. But the reciprocal amount of that, which would be twenty-fourty-one cents, going to the city, plus all of their other tax revenues, that's where their five hundred fifty million would come from. We, we, we'd get a hundred sixty-four million, that would leave the city with five hundred fifty or five hundred, five hundred and some million for their operations. Yes, sir?
One of the things I want to focus as much time on today as we can is, give us, I'm hoping for a snapshot or a high-level overview of, nothing else changes, what does that mean for us? We're getting requests for outstanding budget items. Because I think this is a lot of information. I think we all need to come, lead into an understanding that I really want to focus our time for today and goes forward, um, what this means for all of us.
Okay. Okay. That was just because of the new ordinance requirement.
Right.
And so, do you want to go through this? I'm showing you how we compare them to other localities. So then, comparing, how we compare to our peers, the same peer group we've been comparing ourselves to that have comparable poverty and special needs and ELL students on, which is Portsmouth, Norfolk, and Hampton, along with Roanoke City. Their composite, and what this is showing is what your composite indexes are for them, which they're in the... Pull this up, because my eyes aren't that good. So at the top, you'll see that, uh, we're at a point four seven, five eight composite index. Norfolk, Newport News, and Portsmouth are in the twenties. So we are in the state's eyes, twice as rich as those three localities. Roanoke City has a point three four, uh, four two composite index. We're a point four seven five eight, so Roanoke is the next richest one. What the bottom lines show here is a ten-year history from FY oh seven to FY sixteen. This is showing what percent of the real estate tax rate each of those localities have been receiving. And you'll see that, um, Newport News is getting the same percent, sixty point eight percent that we are currently. Um, and you'll see that, uh, Norfolk and Portsmouth are in the fifty-five, fifty-six percent range. You'll see that our regional peers are in the kind of red shaded boxes there. Uh, you're looking at Henrico, sixty-nine and a half percent, and over at sixty, seventy-eight point six percent, and Chesterfield at eighty-two percent of their real estate taxes. And then here's the tax rates. And then here's the tax rates. Richmond is at a dollar twenty per hundred of value over real estate. Norfolk's at a buck fifteen, Newport News is a dollar twenty-two, Portsmouth a dollar thirty, and Roanoke City a dollar twenty-two. So that's what translates into that real estate tax by two hundred and fifty million dollars, what generates it. And as we're saying, if we were, if we had been held harmless at the same sixty point eight percent rate on the new forecasted two hundred fifty million real estate tax, that would have translated into six million of the eighteen million new revenue that the city has identified for FY seventeen. All right. Enough of the details. So bottom line is, what the mayor's proposal recommended then for us, education, this is showing where the eighteen million went, and showing both where the ten million went a year ago, and where the eighteen million is going now by the major city functions of government. And general governance over here on the left, followed by cultural, parks, and rat and human services, and followed by public safety here in the middle, and then Public Works, which is where the leaf collection and snow removal is located. And then you've got debt service. Debt service actually decreased by two million dollars over what they thought it was going to be a year ago. And then they have a non-departmental hearing. You probably heard from the mayor's announcement that they were going to cut the external agency contributions by twenty-five percent, which they did to some, but not to all. Like GRTC didn't receive a reduction. It's not practical for their operations. So the net, that three and a half million represents a seven percent reduction in that category. And so the blue bar represents where the eighteen million dollars was allocated. You see over here on the rightmost side is education. Zero is projected last year and still for this year, the zero new dollars allocated to education. So that gets us to the bottom line, what does that mean for us? And that brings us to the next set of slides. And... There's only two slides. So eighteen point four million, new city revenues, zero allocated for education. So we need to develop some alternative budget balancing strategies with the goal of, one, implementing the mandates, we had no choice in all those items, retaining teacher salary decompression, retaining the academic approval plan, and retaining some maintenance of services while eliminating others. So some recommendations that we've come up with preliminarily is to implement a hub transportation system. I'll let Mr. Krantz speak more directly about details if you have questions to get through here. The other is to look at merging campuses where we can to save money. We're looking at merging one high school into two other campuses to save a million dollars. Merging three elementary schools into four other campuses would save one point six million dollars. Relocating one elementary school, closing a campus would save us a hundred thousand. Merging two specialty schools into two other campuses would save us three hundred thousand. Closing two office complexes we currently have into one other campus would be three hundred thousand dollars. Demolishing the old El Card real schools would save fifty thousand each of the operating costs we spend annually on those. Contracting janitorial services, this is looked at as an item that came out of Robert Bobb's report four years ago. And at that time, they were estimating, we could save three million dollars, but custodial staff was cut severely since that time, so I don't think we realized that same level of savings at this point. So that's why we said a million potentially could be saved there. Increasing secondary pupil teacher ratio from twenty-two to one, twenty-three to one would save us two million dollars. Eliminating other initiatives that were on the laundry list of things that we had, that you had before you previously signed on the worksheet of three million dollars, which was still retaining, leaving, not touching academic approval plan or the teacher's salary decompression, would save us another three point one million dollars. That list adds up to four point six. So that's where we are at the moment. That still doesn't get us to eighteen million, but it's a start. And so we can wait for your direction, and we can bring you further analysis and information within the next week or so.
So this list here, these are the easy things to do? Just loading through Mr. West, sir. This is a wonderful presentation, Mr. Myers and Mr. Bragg.
Yes. On the whole, it's a third day tomorrow.
So let me do this. Let me ask if board members have questions at this point, but what I would suggest is that we try and set up individual meetings with Mr. West Bay or Tommy to really get an understanding of what this is going to mean. Because we can do all of this, and if all, or any of the nine of us survive doing this list of things, we've still got another six million dollars. So we need to be reversed in what it means. We need to be resolute in our advocacy. And we've got to get to work. So I'll defer to my colleagues on the board to have questions, comments. Ms. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you all so much for the time that you put in doing this and attending the press conference and just working extremely late and hard. This is actually a question for the two of you and the superintendent. If the board directs you, Dr. Bett, to move towards the balancing strategies, how soon could all of these things happen? And then would they all kind of follow in the same season, if you will? For example, closing two office complexes, demolishing old El Card, I know that takes, you know, that would take some time, demolishing old real school. Would that all be done in this season, this school year, in preparation for July first budget?
I would say to you that I think that there will be some overlap because of the normal business that has to be done. Some of it will carry over and run up to start a school, and they run into a school. But in essence, though, they'll be coming off the books and start saving money that we're going to spend. So those are the numbers they provide to me, we're somewhat trying to be conservative with too, because of the loans, the manpower and other things. Within the day, this doesn't help us with the process we're only able to follow, which was laid out for the children option five for the facilities that had a process to it. Frustration for us as administration is, apart from my own, myself, the director will give me some options, but I do not believe that I can have a community building in the world, which I can't sustain competing with, has to end. We're not able to understand. We don't have academic approval coming in.
We're not going to move. We're not going to move.
We're not going to move the needle, we're not going to be struggling. So I just, sure, those are big ticket items that we remember, and that was even cut in half.
Last budget, sorry.
So it's carried over two years, so we've got to do something. Funded this year, can have money to build those initiatives. Some of it would carry over.
It's okay, I just asked you. Thanks.
Because of manpower and time.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? Ms. Larson, Ms. Gray.
Thanks for breaking this down and putting it together. I definitely need some more time to digest it because a lot of this is really dramatic, and to make it happen as quickly would be, it would be tough. The transportation, I guess my biggest concern, you know, right off the bat is just making sure our students are being able to get to school and that they're having access to transportation in a safe way. So obviously, a high schooler walking a couple blocks further is easier to swallow than a kindergartner, that sort of thing. And like in my district, and I know in many districts around the city, we have neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks either, so that makes me uncomfortable. It's, I think, the biggest savings we have up there. So I think it's the ones that I'd like to explore a little more deeply. We've already talked about, you know, specialty schools and making some revisions there that I think wasn't a huge cost savings, more of an efficiency within our system. So...
Transportation represents the largest item, the largest structural deficit. When the budget was done in two thousand and eleven, forty-five driving positions were taken out of the budget, but yes, the routes didn't change. Those forty-five driving positions represent two hundred and seventy routes, one hundred thirty-five in the morning and one hundred and thirty-five in the afternoon. That's over twenty percent of the total routes we serve. If you don't drastically change the level of services, it'll never balance. It's just a physical impossibility. And the level of services that we as transportation provide is far greater than what any of the surrounding districts provide. And those buses, every time we run them, it's three dollars and twenty-five cents per month. So, you know, if we're going to tackle that biggest structural deficit, we've got to change the way we transport students or understand that our costs are just going to be high.
If we're going to do that, and if we're going to bring our district more in line with what other districts offer. Because I think the word hub system is what I'm getting hung up on. Because in my mind, that is, okay, you live in Stony Point neighborhood, everybody from that neighborhood has to go to the Stony Point Gardens or something.
But it may be one or two. We can't go, that bus going inside of the neighborhood and doing door-to-door stops is where our expense is. You know, if we stop a bus to pick up one student, it's about an hour. And as you add up the number of stops, that impacts dramatically that bus's ability to pick up additional students and get to schools. So it's just a matter of how we define. We don't want something to be unsafe in any way, shape, or form. We're not proposing that. What we're saying is that we would do a, instead of picking up, you know, we talked about specialty schools, doing that as a hub system, but then the non-specialty schools, limiting the number of stops we have. They would be safe, they would be secure, we would create stops that all the students could walk safely to, but we would be eliminating door-to-door stops.
Okay. I, I think that makes sense to me in terms of starting the discussion, but I'd like to see it on paper.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks.
Ms. Gray.
Just wanted to make a comment that I think each of us should be reaching out to our county partners, city council, and perhaps requesting views with our budget staff and administrators so that we can share this information when found as early as possible.
Mr. Krantz, I want to piggyback off Mrs. Larson with regard to this transportation. You know, I've been very adamant that all of our children have transportation. And I understand that you were drawing that up so we could look at what that costs look like. I'd like for you to consider, what if we don't provide transportation for our specialty schools? What if we don't provide transportation for the alternative school? Those are schools, those, if the children going to those schools we pick up from all across the city? And would it be fair to say that that's, that's taking the biggest toll on transportation because we're having to go all across the city to take children to these specific locations?
That's part of it because, but that's more of, it's a dollar, but it's also the timing. You know, specialty schools around is where we have a difficult time picking up students, giving them to school, and then getting those assets back to the schools we need them to be at. But you look at transportation, there's not one aspect of transportation that explains the three million dollars. It's a little bit of this, it's a little bit of that, it's a little bit, you know, it's pennies that add up to be that real dollar for us. It's all the programs we run after school. It's the programs we run in midday. It's all the services that the district has, we've gotten used to, become accustomed to, that all of those add up, starts to generate why we see that budget year in and year out.
Okay. Well, so is it possible for us to actually maybe this year, take this year and actually look at what our costs have been for transportation with regard to field trips that we're doing in the middle of the day, the after-school transportation, so that we can take a cool look at, you know, transportation? I'm just concerned that we continue to promote this haves and have-nots. We offer this open enrollment, but we offer no transportation. And then I hear, well, you know, if you go to a specialty school, you can get transportation. If we're taking you to the alternative school, we'll give you transportation. That just does not add up for me. So can we really take a look at what are our costs totally for transportation, and then maybe be able to kind of pull that back?
Ms. Krantz.
Thank you.
Mr. Coleman, Ms. Towne.
I want to thank the team for this swift pulling together to get our attention of how great the situation is facing. Just thank you all for being around here a little while. And I believe, again, the team that we have constantly demonstrates, and this board demonstrates that we're serious about doing our part to make this stuff work. But when you can get quick information like this, that then as our chair told us, get us focused on the fact that this is serious. The things that are, you see here, a lot of hard decisions. And I would speak to our public, you know, to get this information out to you all. We need your help to, for us as a city to come together and recognize that schools really belong to all of us. And we need to figure this out. So thank you all so much.
Ms. Towne.
Hello. First question, thank you, thank you. My first question is in regard to the contract janitorial services. I remember having a discussion with Andy Hawkins years ago, and that led me to understand that if we were to have an outside contractor, then we would basically have less control over the quality of work, that pretty much everything that we would raise concerns about would have to be directed to whoever's leading or owner over that particular entity, especially as it relates to the background checks, the safety.
That's, I mean, that's not correct, but, you know, it happens every day now where private developers contract with third parties for janitorial services, for security services, for some of the different services that are outside of their scope. And you provide those services in accordance with the terms of the contract. So if your contractual agreement says that you're going to do a background check that's at this level, then they have to provide that background check at that level. The other thing is that I saw in Florida, a district next door, that it contracted their services for both their custodial side as well as their transportation side. And it did not take away that responsibility. The responsibility for cleaning their school still resides with the district. And as such, they still maintained an individual that oversaw that particular contract while there was, the employees were the employees of the third-party vendor. Still, the responsibility for the services that were provided relied, rested on the shoulders of the district itself. And so you still have to be involved in managing it, ensuring that we're doing what we're doing, and taking care of your, your parents and your community's phone call about the schools.
Well, I recall having a very extensive conversation. And again, it lets itself to me understanding, a lot of times you're dealing with high turnover rates. If you have an issue with the employee, then that's not someone we can confront directly. We would have to go through their employers, which delays the process. We would have to go through their employers, which delays the process. So can we have some information on the turnover rates for companies like that? Because I'm concerned about.
You can, but I mean, they're going to have the same turnover rates that, third-party companies will face the same challenges that we face. The challenges we face in hiring good people, the same challenges we face in discipling people. Because it's a people's business, and if they don't have the apt personnel to do their jobs, they're not going to keep their contract. So it behooves them to find ways to be attractive and find programs that they can attract good quality people. The thing that the third party has over us is that there's no glass in it. You have that opportunity to go. But there's pluses and minuses. It's just that that is one that we could generate some savings if we were to pursue that particular angle. And I think that the savings we've got projected are fairly conservative but are very attainable.
Okay. Okay, well, just any guidance that you can present on children, what our statistics show as far as our work and how long they've been here invested with us? Because again, these are people that are in direct contact with our, you know, a great asset, our children. Secondly, as you all have made proposals with the high school and elementary mergers, do you all have campuses in mind as you are making those recommendations?
We've gone through option five and just implemented those particular programs on five. We're still refining those. This came about very quickly over the weekend with a lot of long hours. The challenge you have, as we talked about with option five, is that we have many small schools. Our, many of our elementary schools are well below four hundred students. And four hundred students, your cost per child is going to be significantly higher than school systems that have elementary schools that are five, six, and seven hundred on average. And so if you're going, if we're going, as Ralph has repeatedly said, about eighty percent of our cost is people. So if we're going to find a way to reduce our budget, that hole, that gap, you've got to do it within the personnel because there's just honestly not enough in other line items to make it, to make it count. So for us, it's finding ways to reduce our footprint.
But what elementary schools in particular are you all?
We're still tweaking that, and that's something we can go through one-on-one as we finalize that particular list.
Is there any school that's at the top of your list for transportation?
Not at this point, no ma'am, because it's still a work-in-process. This was done hard over the weekend, but I'm, it's been some long hours, but I ain't ready to say it's final, I ain't close.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we're considering.
I looked at every single school in the system. Yeah, I didn't look at that, I just looked at facility, projections, demographics, the whole, you know, our whole thing, we did it option one.
Thank you.
Good, see, go with our hands.
The next question is, I have four extra items, I will see what I don't receive for action budget transfers.
One of those chairman board members of budget transfer has got one minor adjustment to the second one, first one on the list. Essential education services, the account code for the transfer to, and the first one on the right side of the list says professional services fifty-four thirty, account code. We'd like to change that tuition fifty-four forty, that's where we need money for that one. Other than that, the rest of our, that's.
So last question.
Yes, ma'am.
Questions? Questions?
Yes. The budget transfers. Let me pull them up, please. It's concerning for me, we, in particular, the one for exceptional education, the amount of that transfer.
That's representing of the structural deficiency that began, was in the seventy-dollar range, and we only were able to fund half of that last year. And so they've become necessary, move monies from other account codes. So we started growing the salary turnover in lab right here, moved those funds to cover these tuition payments and so forth. We have, these are the same annual amounts of expenses we've had for the last few years. We just don't have the budget in place to accommodate that. Part of the money's that didn't get transferred to the budget, so that's why it's necessary.
Is there a motion? We're moving to probably second, the budget transfers, is there any discussion? That's correct.
I have a question about the tuition payment. Has that got covered by the Comprehensive Services Act? Does this?
Good evening. Portion of the funds for the payments that we have for students in private day are covered by CSA, but we still have a contribution and this tuition cost also covers the cost for behavior aids for students of one-to-one support.
Okay, so the million dollars can be transferred from, I don't even know where it's been transferred.
Various lines.
From various line items. Are we going to be reimbursed for any of that, really? Or that's all coming out?
That's all coming out. We only get billed for our portions, CSA and, or certain portions.
They pay it directly, so.
We only get billed for our quarterly installments, for our contribution for students who are in private day, and then our monthly bill that we pay for students with behavioral aids. But again, as Mr. Westlake said, these are things that we still have those gaps from last year in the budget, and again, that will be reflected again in the upcoming budget.
So with, a combination of CSA, and you may not be able to answer this right now, and our funds, how much does the system pay out in tuition? Or does the city, combined with the schools, pay out in tuition for the students? Please leave it for you. Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? I'm perking your call room.
Motion to save on this Harrison comment, second, that Dr. Jones, so, transfers, Mr. Colvin? Yes, Mrs. Larson. Yes, Mrs. Taylor? No. Mrs. Harrison, comment?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinky, add it?
Yes.
Mr. Colvin?
Yes.
Motion to pass this case. The next item is, I will see what I'm receiving for action, revisions to section eight, definitely for equity policies due to achievement of the policy.
Ms. Willey?
Picking you for a first, first moment in audience. Basically, what you have in front of you as the secondary is the equity policy that was presented during the last meeting. You'll see on the summary page that there is an option one and an option two noted here or included here. And simply, option one is the policy as it was, the policy that was presented during the last meeting with several adjustments that are noted. And I would say that they were minor adjustments made to that particular policy. Option two is here, as noted in the summary. There was a, there were suggested revisions that were pretty substantive, as you can see in option two, that I believe noted its own, kind of reading of its own core policy and suggested it as that, so that the board member's suggestion did not get lost or not considered. So at this point, I will, Mr. Chair, I don't know if you want me to explain the changes or, or the gist of option two, or how that's going.
Yeah, while, while, while we talk about the extent that we can, option two, have you ever seen changes to option one?
While there are option one, the changes to option one, simply are somewhat technical, as I indicated, there was some language that the administration in the first read of this suggested to be changed. So you'll see in number one, and then also the board member, Miss Taylor, and, you know, who, who put the initial draft together, you know, the initial draft, and then it was developed into this particular policy. On policy guidelines, you will see that there are certain reporting requirements or actions that the superintendent is directed to take. And the first one that had significant or a change to it is providing the bi-annual report on division-wide progress reported by aggregate. And that's, again, taking out consistent with provisions of the academic improvement plan, but having a measure of progress reports, and the statement bi-annual is added there. Section two, taking out Twenty-First Century Learning Environments, and I'm sure that is to address just because you have here what considerations for equitable space are already. And then on number six and seven, rather than have a report on the employment retention, recruiting, and placement of persons from underrepresented groups, that has been changed to ensure that staff members receive professional development regarding cultural inclusion and responsibility, so as to request of a board member. And then additional, provide an annual report to the school board on the division-wide efforts to promote parental awareness and involvement in the educational process. That was a request of a board member, so those have been changed as well.
And those changes on option one technically were less extensive? On option one, those were requested by the state?
Some of them were, and there were several of them requested by the administration, but the ones that I mentioned, six, seven, and adding the bi-annual to number one, and the type of reporting by aggregate, in the aggregate by school was requested from the superintendent. For option two, and I do not want to put words in this, Ms. Epps' mouth, so basically, if I have misread your understanding, my understanding of the rationale behind the changes, I'm sure you will speak up. Basically, in speaking with Ms. Epps, she had concerns that the policy, the purpose of the policy, if this was to be a true equity policy, needed to be fleshed out a little bit more. And I think that the changes that she's suggesting reflect her view of what needed to be addressed. Some of the factors for consideration changed from, I guess, reflect more of systemic practices and barriers that she believes, you know, or that may be harder for students that need to be articulated in this particular policy. The policy guideline section was also changed to reflect the desire to have, I guess, a conversation or more people at the table for the conversation regarding racial diversity and also exceptional professional development as well. And just the more systemic processes, and it does include the requirement of a personal improvement plan, or, excuse me, personalized learning plan for students and engaging family members to build effective partnerships. And I guess, again, just to target the systemic and institutional barriers that are noted here in the suggestions and try to, in some ways, eliminate them, you know, in any reason. And I guess, that's all I really.
Any discussion or questions before we go? Ms. Gray?
I mean, I'm having a hard time understanding exactly the practical meaning and what this implementation plan would look like and how we would measure it. So I'm not exactly clear. It sounds good on paper, but I'm not exactly sure what it would look like. So before I venture out and say we direct the superintendent to so forth and so on, I wanted to know exactly what we, what product we're looking to see.
Is this option one or four options?
The, the one that talks about the, the second one that talks about the implementation. Yeah, the implement and lead a system-wide equity plan that is aligned with the goals of the academic achievement plan. So, yeah, it talks about externalized learning plans. It talks about a lot of very specific items, but I don't think we currently have in place. So I think that it may create a whole lot of.
So, questions, what does this look like practically?
Yeah, and how much time would it take to, and resources would it take to implement such a plan?
Ms. Harrison, comment? Ms. Epps?
Ms. Epps can go ahead and speak to that because she may address my question in her response. In discussing the implement, specifically with regard to the implementation of leading the systemic-wide equity plan, there are currently at least three equity teams operating in our school system. And so I'm thinking that we can take that across the division. To speak to, and it's my understanding, some of the work that they're doing is about racial equity, it's about children seeing each other differently, coming up with those balances that all children that are part of this public school are recognized for their unique individuality. And we provide a staff that is professional, receives professional development to be able to service those children. We also, I want to say in here that it also speaks to equity in our funding, as to how we provide funding to each of our schools. It's just about bringing some balance into our school division.
Thank you, okay. So my, my question wasn't answered, so I just wanted to know a couple of things that Ms. Payne probably can help with this. The student learning plans, as I think they're called in your options, Ms. Payne, would that be for students K through twelve? Would, and Ms. Payne is probably can help answer this as well, but as Ms. Gray indicated, what does that look like? Because many, many years ago, when my, when my son was an elementary student here in the district, as well as a middle school student, each student in math and reading had a student learning plan, but it was in certain grades. And those plans followed them, I think, through high school or something like that. So I'm thinking, is it something like that? I'm not, I'm not really sure.
So I'm not privy to, I don't sit on this committee.
Okay.
That created this option question, what that learning plan looked like. Now, there are appropriate plans that students start to complete in middle school, so, but that's not a learning plan. A learning plan, in my experience, directs how children learn, what children learn, or what timeline children learn, but I am not familiar of the intent of this particular item. I had a question about it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I just have a few questions around the, the metrics of measuring, because to me, a lot of this, in a sense, depends on like one person's opinion. So I don't know how we come up with a system that, that measures and properly enforces, you know, points four, five, six, and seven. So I, I don't know, I just, again, to me, it's very broad. I don't, I don't know how to.
Are you looking at option two or one?
Option two. Because I like what it's. Because I like what it says, I just don't, I don't know how if someone says, you're not doing this, we're gonna say, yes, we did do it, or no, we didn't.
Have, Ms. Epps, have you and Ms. Taylor talked about these changes? Since, I mean, if Ms. Taylor's really the one who brought this issue of equity policy to us, I'm just wondering if we might be aware of it.
Ms. Taylor, I did have some discussion about it, and she was concerned that my option would be a little scary for you all. That it would make you uncomfortable. So, I mean, I, I, we need an equity policy in this district, so I'm open to consideration of option one.
So, is there a motion to adopt one of these? Since this is our second read, we can vote to move, correct?
I'm with that we adopt option one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's go move to properly second. Is there any discussion of option one? Any discussion? Madam President, call the roll, please.
Motion to make Ms. Gray second, but Ms. Taylor to approve action one of the equity policies, Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones? Mrs. Pinky Anne?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Yes. That was good, I'm staying.
Yes, and then to it. Next item, Ms. Taylor, to approve action one of the equity policies, Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinky Anne?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin?
Actions for information include the resignation of eight employees, the name change of one employee, the rescission of employment of one employee, the retirement of two employees, and the appointment of 90 contracted employees.
Thank you. Are there questions that we need to discuss in close?
Yes.
Okay. Next item, Madam President.
The next item is Article 04 received school for travel and district activity requests. And I had two requests. One is from Mrs. Larson to contribute to the teacher appreciation dance, $270,000, and one is from Mrs. Pinky Anne to attend the conference center at the Maritime Institute. And the estimated cost for that is $165,000.
Is there any discussion of those two requests?
Yes.
Just ran it a second. Go ahead, go ahead. If you got discussion, go ahead.
I just, I just wanted to personally thank those board members who have already contributed to the teacher appreciation dance this year. I really appreciate it. Just a reminder, the one quick tip in is April the 29th, from 7:00 to 9:00 at the Addet Town Hill. So, I hope to see everyone there. But thank you, board members, who have continued to contribute and have always contributed. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Epps?
Yes. Good regard to the teacher appreciation dance. When we last discussed it, we were not aware of the final costs. The teacher appreciation dance costs $7,000 last year. Are we sure that we can afford, that everybody needs to, we need to understand that we're all going to need to chip in and give Mrs. Harris Mohammed some money?
Can I respond to that?
Sure. Ms. Harris Mohammed?
Yes. Um, a couple of things. The teacher appreciation and the cost of it has gone through the correct procedures that the district require. The cost is, is pretty substantial because teachers are not paying for food. I am covering probably 80% out of my constituent service budget for the dance. I have, I started last year asking board members to contribute, but to make a contribution because I could not cover the cost myself, one. And then also, I thought that would be a way for all board members to make some type of contribution to the dance. We went through the process, the location that we had it at last year and the year before, and this year came back with the lowest bid. But the food is the highest cost. We also have door prizes for teachers. We also have photography for teachers. We also have a DJ for, not just teachers, but it's for the staff. It's for anyone who works with, who's on RPS table. Even though it is in preparation for Teacher Appreciation Week, I think everyone should be appreciated in the district that has anything to do with moving students forward. So, I've never received any questions from board members about the dance. This is not the first year that I've done it. It has moved from a school building to a better location. And I'm hoping that board colleagues will continue to support the vision and the idea of supporting teachers and the staff who work within rich and public schools.
Ms. Grant?
I just had a question. What has been your most recent attendance at that dance?
Of course, all, everyone who attends does not attend at one time, it's just, you know, we're just, we're ballpark.
Not just a ballpark.
But around 500 staff can come at any point in time. And it has increased from 2013 because it's at a nicer location. And then not only that, but I also have a contest. And for those of you who may not be familiar, the school that has the most attendance, elementary, middle and high, will receive a barbecue slash cookout sometime in August or September for their attendance to the dance. And that's pretty competitive because they want to come and they want the cookout, they want to eat. But it's around that ballpark.
So, just, just to add to the conversation, that's less than $14 per teacher or staff member to eat and party and have a marathon. So, I think it's well worth the morale investment that it brings.
And that's, as an educator, we do not get paid what we think will work. And because I understand the work that they do every day, this is, this may be my idea. This might have been, this might have been planted in my spirit, but it's a way for all nine of us to tell people that we appreciate them. And I'm hoping people would jump on board with it. If not, because it has been ordained, it's going to happen.
Any further discussion on the district activities request? Is there a motion?
So, second.
Let's go move to properly second, that we approve the district activity request before us. Madam President, call the roll.
Ms. Gray, Madam President, Ms. Harris Mohammed to approve the district activity. Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson? Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Absolutely.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinky Anne?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Portion of Ms. Epps. Next item is Item 6, Divisional Gender. Item 6.1, to approve the minutes on May 4th, 18, 2015, and February 8th, 16, 2016, May 71 presented. Make a present to the board if you would agree.
Minutes. Any corrections? Is there a motion?
So.
Is there a second? A second. Approval of minutes in our list on the agenda have been reviewed properly second. Any discussion?
Okay, I'm fine.
Any discussion?
Motion to make Ms. Harris Mohammed second, to approve the 440 minutes, Mr. Boyer?
I'm staying.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones? Mrs. Pinky Anne?
I'm staying.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Next item, Madam President.
Ms. Taylor, will that come, respect? The next item is closed.
It is closed.
Pursuant to the personnel section 2.2-371181, the legal section 2.2-371187 of the Code of Conduct 1950 as amended, I move that the school board of the city of Richmond convene and close session two, discuss prospective candidates for appointment and the assignment of appointment promotion, performance, demotionality, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers or employees of the division, including consideration of the human resources agenda of this date result of audit findings and employee matters 151653, 151654, 151655, 151656, 151657, 151658, 151659, and 151660, for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual in litigation, in student litigation matters 151601, and personnel matter litigation 141542, and profitable litigation regarding personnel matters 151617 and 151628, which where such consultation or briefing and open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the school board and/or consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the school board regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Second.
Before we go into close, I just want to thank Jennifer Cumming. We look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks, but in the last student year, we started something that I think is good. So, because this is school board, because you're a public school student, we're gonna give you a little homework. Bring us back an issue to talk about that you, that you'd like to see us work on or address or change. Is there a second to the motion to go into close?
Second.
All who's in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Any abstained? And now, close.